All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council meeting of August twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter. Mr. Young.
President.
Mr. Walters here. Ms. Cleo McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Molton.
Here.
Mr. McDougall. Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Molton.
I move to excuse Councilmember McDougall from tonight's meeting.
And Mr. Carter, if you would, I'll move.
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna take that as a motion by Ms. Molton and Mr. Young and a second by Ms. Hubick to excuse Mr. Carter and Mr. McDougall. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thanks. Motion carries. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, a couple of announcements. First of all, I just want to put out, we have a technical issue with our audio system and council meeting is not currently available on channel ten or on our city website. However, you can live stream it. And we put this out just a few minutes ago on our website. You can honor the Zoom link and we do have a couple, at least one person on Zoom, but you can also get the live stream from our YouTube channel. So Anacortes YouTube channel. So again, apologize that we expect to have it up tomorrow. Problem with an encoder. Next, also, item six B, we need to remove that from our agenda. That's the Past Lake Ten Inch Water Main Replacement Project. Had our largest water customer, one of our largest wholesale water customers requested a little more time to coordinate with staffs. And because it's that water line that goes over to Oak Harbor. So we're both doing large studies on that. So I think it was fair to give them a a little bit of week to make sure they could communicate with their electeds. But our staff and their staff have been talking. And then, let's see, also, Open Streets. Oh, that's right, coming up this weekend, August twenty-seventh, Open Streets. It's always a popular event. Second through Tenth Street will be closed from eleven AM to three PM on Sunday, the twenty-seventh. So this Sunday. So bring your non-motorized transportation, enjoy the open streets on Sunday. And I think that was all I had. So next up is other announcements and committee reports, Public Works Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Molton.
Thank you. The Public Works Committee met at five PM today and it was council members Young, Walters and myself and a whole bunch of public work staff, most of whom you can see sitting in the back of their room right now. So we had a lot of interesting things to talk about as usual. The first was a report results on testing at our water treatment plant for unregulated contaminants monitoring results and those came back clean. We're not surprised, but it is good news nonetheless. We have a Pass Lake Water Main Design Contract that is on tonight's agenda. So we'll hear more about that shortly. We discussed the Twenty-Ninth and Skyline Water Reservoirs. And there will be a contract coming soon to council for about sixty-five thousand dollars with the company HDR to look at the different options for either restoring or replacing those two reservoirs on Twenty-Ninth Street and out at Skyline. That will include a future capacity analysis as well. There is also a new changes to regulations for the lead and copper rule from the EPA. They have lowered the maximum allowable concentrations of lead in drinking water. They used to be fifteen parts per billion and now it's one point five parts per billion, which is great because that will reduce lead levels in drinking water by an additional twenty to thirty percent. And we all know how dangerous lead is. We don't think we have a problem. We're pretty sure that we don't, but we also are going to do a study and about any, any lead or copper corrosion. So that will be a contract modification coming up for us also, taking it from an eighty-seven thousand dollar contract to, oh, it's gonna add about eighty-seven thousand dollars to the contract, which will bring it to a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. So that's coming up in the next few weeks. The more good news is the old water treatment plant demolition is in progress and all the protections to the water system have been installed and they are being monitored in real time. And so far, the project is on budget and on time. We have an R Avenue contract modification on our agenda tonight, which we will discuss as well as the twelfth and commercial roundabout project update. So we have some consultants that will be calling in tonight. So that'll be super interesting, too. Thanks.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Yeah, if I might add, Ms. Molton, she covered it, but I wanted to be clear. One of the things that I didn't understand that was also made very clear to me by the staff, which I appreciate, is that the UCMR five sampling is for thirty chemical contaminants and those are considered forever chemicals such that we have heard, I mean, for, yeah, forever chemicals. We hear a lot about it in the news, forever chemicals in our water. And so that was part of the testing and there wasn't anything there. So for me, that was very good. Thank you.
Okay, and just to reiterate, we actually are gonna move that the Past Lake Ten Inch Water Main Replacement Project to next week. Again, sorry you didn't get that information. I was just on the phone with Mayor Severance and Oak Harbor, who requested just a little more time to coordinate. We're both doing studies on each end of our line and their staff probably hasn't completely briefed their electeds. So they'd asked to wait on that one. So we'll see that one next week. So that's six B. The, and then I personally went out there today to our water treatment plant to witness the initial demo. And I believe all, I know all of the right protections are in place. So again, my hat's off to Brian and your folks out there to make sure that we are protecting our operations as we do demolition on the old plant. So really impressive, all the monitoring sites we have set up and all the precautions that were taking place there. All right, next up is Personnel Committee.
Ms. Cleo McGrath. Thank you. So we had our Personnel Committee meeting today at four PM and included Director Nguyen, Councilmembers Young and Molton. And so we just kind of went over some of the highlights since we don't get a regular meeting as frequently as some of the other committees. So far for this year, there's been about sixty new hires. Twenty are regular full-time positions. Thirty have been either temporary seasonal kind of college high school type hires. And then ten of those sixty were actually for volunteer firefighters. So that's quite a bit of volume for, to go through the HR department. As for exits, there were about eighteen, sixteen of those were regular employees and two were temps. So that balances out that twenty new and and eight and sixteen exits. We've got, they've been working really hard, the, the police department and HR to fill the vacancies of existing vacancies for the police department, not tied to the, the levy lid lift. So they're working towards having about four of those five vacancies filled, which is a pretty incredible achievement. They've been incredibly nimble. They've done some required change modifications to the requirements. And then just if they see a good candidate, they are reacting as quickly as possible. So we don't lose them to some neighboring department. So good on them for doing that. And it allows us to then this next year work on those additional positions that we would like to see filled so that the community actually sees a positive impact and improvement. Uh, speaking of the eight positions for fire, you know, there's about four that we're hoping to hire before the end of the year and and that seems to be work going along nicely. We've got some kind of in the hopper to go forward. And then finally, our Public Works Director had did an extensive interview process with a number of folks within the sea and should be starting early to mid-September. So that, that's exciting for us all. There are some other positions that are staying open. We had about twenty-one positions. Then we talked a little bit about NeoGov, which is a software contract that's finally completed. It will allow a more streamlined approach to the application tracking manager review process for new hires. So seems like something we should have already had, but it's exciting that we're gonna get that kind of up and running late of this year and then totally launched in two thousand and twenty-four. There's been some DEI training we've done. We would like to do a little bit more extensive one next year, but it's getting started. And then we talked a little bit about some of the challenges when it comes to our, our incredible community forest lands. And how do we make sure that things are regulated? And if there is an issue that there is someone from the city who can appropriately respond to a problem? We see a lot of, a huge, a huge kind of activity at Whistle Lake a lot of times in the summer and we just want to make sure that there is an appropriate response from the city that is calm, that is able to do it. And it's not falling on individuals who are otherwise not the person to respond, such as seasonal workers. So that was just kind of something we're trying to talk about for next year. I think that was it.
All right. And just to follow up on that great report, I do intend to bring our Public Works Director to council next week for hopefully confirmation. So pretty exciting there. Okay, any other announcements, committee reports that we may have missed? All right, I am on to, we are on to public comment. We received one written public comment that's in your package and that will be published. And I have one person signed up or I have the Downtown Anticorps Alliance signed up, but you're signed up to talk about the Twelfth Street Roundabout. So we'll make sure that if you're okay talking about that, the Commercial Avenue Complete Streets, because that is the Twelfth Street Roundabout. We'll make sure you get to talk no matter what. So that will hold off to then. But any other public comment, looking for any hands raised online? Okay, moving on to our consent agenda, consent agenda items A, B and C. Counsel.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Molton.
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items Five A, B and C.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Ms. Molton, a second by Mr. Young to approve Consent Agenda Items A, B and C. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, I think I see some of our guests showing up online, but we're on to item six A. And this is other business. And first up is six A Commercial Avenue Complete Streets, Pride Project Phase One. And this is an update. This is a presentation. And we'll make sure to get our public comment in on this, Mr. Holman. So don't, don't let me forget to make sure we get our public comment. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Holman. Our doing a great job as an interim Public Works Director, but it's probably happy to have somebody coming in soon. So, Mr. Holman, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of the council, members of the public here and online. Yeah, we'll start off with, I'm very happy to hear that we have a new Public Works Director coming so that I can focus on my duties as a city engineer. But this evening, I'm here to introduce to you, and I'm not sure who's running things, but if I can get my, my consultants queued up, I'm here to introduce to you Brendan Gonzalez with Alta Planning and Design. He's our consultant project manager on what we call the Commercial Avenue Complete Street Project Phase One, also known as the Twelfth and Commercial Roundabout, or affectionately known as the Safeway Roundabout by some.
That's what I like to call it.
Brandon's gonna share with you some updates. We were last before you as a design team right around the turn of twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. So we were here in December twenty-first of twenty twenty, as well as February first of twenty twenty-one, talking about kind of the traffic analysis we provided for the project. And at that time, we kind of said we were headed towards designing a roundabout, but we promised to bring something back to you folks. We've spent a lot of effort in getting that roundabout nailed down, so much so that we've progressed this to thirty percent design, which in the design world means we go talk to Wash Dot about their first set of approvals for this project. And so this has been submitted to them for their input, because this intersection is, is owned essentially by them. But we also wanted to take this opportunity to bring back to you as a council. So you could see what we've done, see where we've gone with the project as well as talk about some of the things moving forward. So I want to introduce you Brendan Gonzalez, as well as Michelle Mock with Transportation Solutions Inc. So Brandon's our project manager for Alta and Michelle is the lead geometric designer on the roundabout. So I'll have you take it away, Brandon.
Yeah, thank you, Tim. I'm gonna share my screen real quick. All right, just want to confirm that everybody can see it. Michelle, give me a nod or.
Yep, we can see Brandon. Now we can hear you just fine.
Great. Well, good evening, everybody. Mayor and council, good to be back again. And like I said, I could see some familiar faces. So just good to be back and give you an update on, you know, how things have been progressing with, with the project. And Michelle, again, Tim gave an introduction for both of us, but again, I've been project manager. I'm a principal of Alta. And I've been serving as the project manager and Michelle is with Transportation Solutions. And you probably recognize her for some other projects. I know she's designed some other roundabouts in Anacortes and has worked quite a bit in the city. So getting started, I don't want to spend too much time on this, but I wanted to give just a quick background and overview, just to kind of get us to today for both the public and then also I think there might be one or two new council people. So just to give a little bit of a background, you know, what's kind of led us to the, to today. And a lot of this, I think, is just an important refresher, because it's been building since two thousand and fifteen of essentially what some of that visioning, planning and design was. And now we get the fun job of really going through and just kind of making it come to life. So this really began with that twenty sixteen corridor plan. And that project looked at the entire Commercial Avenue corridor and basically, you know, looked at several designs and alternatives for the complete streets. This is the section of our quarter that came out of that plan. And this was kind of the final section. And this is really early concept design. So they weren't really getting into a lot of the nitty-gritty details. This was really looking at the right of way, looking at some general dimensions and trying to get the idea for what the quarter could eventually be. And, you know, like I said, I won't go through the details, but generally, one of the, a couple of the really big takeaways from that initial design were fully protected bikeways. You know, along Commercial Corridor or Commercial Avenue, widening the pedestrian spaces, adding entries and landscaping to really enhance the aesthetics and just the overall look and feel of the corridor and making this really the transition and pulling into downtown Anacortes where we really see that change in character around Eleventh Street. And so this is really what we've been keeping in the back of our minds and trying as best as we can to stay true to some of the initial design intents. This is just rendering that I'm sure many of you have seen of the corridor. This is a little bit farther south on Commercial Avenue. Again, it's really hitting at, you know, the protected bikeways, widen pedestrian spaces and just really kind of changing the look and feel of the quarter to be compatible with the complete street. And, you know, Wash Dot has also been really placing a lot of emphasis on, you know, creating complete streets and in multi-modal, integrating different multi-modal options, you know, along their state corridors. And this is just a prime opportunity for that. And this was also coinciding with, I believe, where some land use and zoning changes that were also happening at the time. So it was really looking at the future of Commercial Avenue Corridor and some of those changes that might also be happening on the land use side. What, you know, this really began in twenty nineteen, December sixth, we had an open house. And it was the first time we were there in person to, to do the open house and also to meet with you, council. Obviously, twenty twenty, COVID happened and we pivoted, did a lot of online engagement through web map surveys. We did a virtual open house website. There was a lot of things that we really did in twenty twenty to try to still get a lot of the public input. We just shifted it to be more virtual. And since that time, we've been going through doing traffic evaluations, looking at different design options. You know, for the quarter, these were some of those really early concepts. If you were at that first public meeting and looking at, you know, at the time, what we were thinking was the traditional intersection, the signalized intersection. And as the progress, our project progressed and after having some conversations with Wash Dot, we really started to change into, you know, looking at a roundabout at the, at the intersection of Commercial and Twelfth. And really Wash Dot's direction at the time was, you know, that's best practice. They're really moving in that direction. And so they wanted us to do the traffic analysis and essentially to justify or not to justify, but to see if the traffic would be alleviated, improved through the inclusion of a roundabout design. And, you know, generally speaking, there's a lot of efficiencies that come with roundabouts and traffic. And so that was kind of the natural progression of looking at the two different alternatives of, you know, signalized intersection versus roundabout. But we went through the process of vetting, you know, a number of different options. TSI, Michelle's firm did a traffic analysis for us and they looked at a few different options. I'm gonna skip to the next page, because this slide is really kind of the summary of that traffic analysis and a little bit of a high level or in a higher level. And this is a slide that was directly from the last time that we met with council or with, with you folks. So we looked at no change. We looked at the signalized intersection and narrowing, and we looked at the roundabout design. And just keep in mind that these three graph are kind of figures at the top or concepts. Those were very, very conceptual level designs. These are things that we're just kind of doing more to give you the idea of what we're talking about. But these aren't, you know, the technical designs that we've gotten into over the past year or so. But looking at all of the different types of performance measures and safety, traffic flow, capacity, queuing, freight and cost, this was essentially how those stacked up. And like I said, it's not really a huge surprise that the roundabout performed best when it comes to especially traffic related issues, capacity, queuing and flow. But if done correctly, there's also the added benefit for people walking and biking. And so that's really when we looked at the roundabout design, we're really trying to keep that special eye out for people walking and biking, since that's the origination of the funding in the first place to do the project. And like we showed earlier, you know, the one really kind of downside, I think of the roundabout design is or the most significant downside is the cost, you know, from potential additional ride of way from the design of the roundabout. So that is the downside of it. But important to note that regardless of which design we pursued, there was likely going to be some level of, you know, of right of way acquisition. So that's where we left off about a year and a half ago, whenever we came to council and got the, you know, kind of the thumbs up to start exploring roundabouts as the preferred alternative and see where that was gonna lead us. So once we started, you know, I just want to kind of walk through a little bit of the design process, but, you know, once we got the approval to move forward with a roundabout design, one of the things that, you know, Michelle can speak well to, you know, is the, the different parameters that we have to really set as we explore design, because we're trying to balance, you know, both the stakeholders around the site, but also with, you know, the requirements for engineering technical design. So that's, you know, really kind of what we're looking at balancing. And so we met with property owners and at the time, there was kind of a few different pinpoints that we were trying to set to help guide the overall design of the roundabout. One is on the southwest corner. So just to orient you a little bit on the graphic, north is to the right. So going towards downtown Anacortes is to the right. The American Dream Realty, this is the southwest corner. And what we were trying to do is to avoid the actual building itself so that it wasn't essentially, you know, taking the building. That was one pinpoint that we set on the northeast corner after talking with the property owners. The Whinby Coffee Stand, which you kind of see the outline of it here and a couple of vehicles waiting in line queued was to try to avoid, you know, impacts to that northeast corner of the Whinby Coffee. And then we also had discussions with Safeway. And at the time, the direction was really, or their, their ask was really to try to keep this part of the drive aisle, this parking aisle on the western side of the building open. So those were kind of the pinpoints that we were trying to start off with. And, you know, we looked at, I think it was a total of thirteen different iterations. It may have been a couple more than that. But really, it's looking at the diameter, the size of the roundabout. We explored a little bit smaller. And we also explored, you know, larger. I think at one point, we looked at even a hundred and thirty-two foot diameter roundabout. Again, just to make sure that we're evaluating the different options, the scale, and also the different pros and cons and impacts of, you know, the different alternatives that we were looking at. And these are just two different examples. The one on the left is actually the preferred concept and the one that we ended up, you know, taking into design. And then the one on the right, this is just an example of a hundred and sixteen foot diameter roundabout. You know, each provides maybe slightly different benefits or slightly different constraints or issues, but we went through that process. And that led us to, you know, this design that I believe was shared already. And if not, we're happy to provide the, the initial design. But this is getting us towards our thirty percent concept and this is a planned view of it. And, you know, it's, it's really exciting. Again, when I showed the, the earlier concepts from the Commercial Avenue Corridor and getting to this point where we're really getting into the technical design standards and applying them and making this really come to life. And so as part of thirty percent and moving forward, we're gonna be doing the three D work. So that's when it really starts to pop. But like Tim mentioned, we were really excited at the very end of June to submit the channelization plan based on this design to Wash Dot to start getting their feedback and their, their input on the overall design. And we'll get into too much of the details, but, you know, the, the, the concept on the screen really does incorporate a lot of the, I guess, the intent of the initial twenty sixteen quarter plan with protected bikeways. We have landscaping. This was a compromised roundabout design size because we had to scale it back just a little bit to minimize the amount of right of way. But, you know, overall, I think a lot of it is really true to the initial intent. Zooming in a little bit more, I mentioned some of those pinpoints that we talked about as far as design parameters and don't need to hit those again, but generally speaking, we, you know, avoided the impacts to the building itself as part of this design. We were able to preserve the Whinby Coffee access point. And then we were also able to preserve the Safeway parking aisle through the west side of the building. So when we're thinking about, you know, engineering design, we're bringing in our perspective as people, you know, design a lot of infrastructure for people walking and biking. We, the design team are really, we really believe in this concept and we believe that it incorporates a lot of, you know, the initial, you know, intent of the project while also respecting, you know, the minimizing, I guess, the amount of right of way taking that we need to have by scaling it back just a little bit. So this really is our compromised design. And, you know, finally, just a couple issues are not issues, the things that we're working through right now with, with the design. And I'll let, I'll turn it over to Michelle in just a second to talk about these in more detail. But the reality is, is that we're really focusing on the southwest corner of the American Dream Realty at this point as a part of, you know, kind of project considerations. A few things just to kind of note is with the roundabout design, there is truck movements that, there's two true critical truck movements that are really important for us to consider. The first is northbound traveling on Commercial to westbound, oops, to westbound onto twelve. That's, Michelle will talk about the design details for this in a second, but that was the first major kind of truck turning movement that we had to consider. And just to call out, you know, the area in the circle here could be landscaping, but we have a really large truck apron on the roundabout island to accommodate that truck turning movement. The second is the eastbound twelve to southbound commercial truck turning movement. And so in order to accommodate that, you can see this corner here that this is actually a large truck apron. And so we really, those are the two critical truck turning paths that we really had to incorporate into design. And that does make the radius of the north of the southwest corner a lot larger and also pushes things a little bit more into the southwest corner. The other thing that we're kind of working through at this point is the, the reality of the configuration of parking stalls. So I want to go to this picture and then I'll come back. The, the challenge that we're dealing with from a design perspective is that we have a flush sidewalk essentially along Twelfth and also along Commercial. And so the parking stalls in the north and the east side of the building, in order for people to use those parking stalls, they are driving over the sidewalk parking and then likely when they're backing out in some way, they're probably backing out across the, the flush sidewalk and kind of making their turns or trying to pull through. The reality is, is that these are not compliant and we don't have the space essentially along here for there to be a full drive aisle. And so any change that we make essentially to the sidewalks on either of these sides is going to impact the parking and take away that parking. The other thing just to note is that the corner here is technically ADA and non-compliant. And federal guidelines require that if, even if you do an overlay on both Commercial or Twelfth and it is greater than one quarter inch impact, you have to bring up these facilities to ADA compliance. So it's not our project in particular that is, you know, the design of a project that's interfering with, you know, these parking stalls. Any project that the city takes on in the future that is going to require an upgrade and updating of these, the sidewalk in this corner curb cut or ramp is going to require, you know, or is essentially going to impact the parking stalls of the business. So that's something that we're walking through at this point. And then the other is the Safeway entrance, you know, as we, we looked at the possibility of closing off the Safeway entrance, it did a traffic evaluation. And essentially that pushed traffic over to Eleventh and it created a failing grade at Eleventh and Commercial if we were to close that off. So. So it's essentially pushing traffic away. The design team, after looking at a number of different options, recommended to keep the ingress egress into the Safeway parking lot, especially because of the number of recreational vehicles, trucks that are, you know, using the Safeway and driving out. It does provide them a, you know, better ingress egress point than we feel 11th. So I want to turn it over to Michelle for just a second to give a little bit more of, you know, the reality of how we were re, how we were configuring the roundabout. You know, the different implications of moving it, you know, to the northwest, to the southwest. So Michelle, let me stop.
Thank you, Brandon. I'll go ahead and share my screen here. All right, so showing up for people?
Yep, we can see it.
So this is just to reorient because it's a little bit different orientation than what Brandon was showing. North is up, so Safeway building is over here on the right. This is the American Dream. This is Whinby Coffee. This is out to the ferry and then down Commercial. And so as Brandon mentioned, one of the requirements by this Wash Dot, the State Department is to allow for a WB67, which is this vehicle here, the largest semi truck allowed on a state route without an oversized permit. And so that turning movement is a requirement by the state to be able to make that left turn up off of Commercial. And also again, the right off of 12th and on down. And as you can see here, this is kind of their, their sweet path, as we call it, how the trailer will swing as they turn. And one thing that we looked at was the location and the size, as Brandon mentioned, of the roundabout. And just to demonstrate, as you move a roundabout in different locations, say we pulled it way over to Safeway, it, it makes this area in here more of a tighter angle. And as you can see down here with a tighter angle, the truck sweet path becomes wider because the trailers needs to track wider. And so there becomes a point of diminishing returns of, of how far you can pull the roundabout in different directions. So say if we tried to pull it up to the northeast, we would still have a wider truck sweeping path here. And so it would still be impacting this corner. Or say if we tried pulling it in other directions, there would be similar issues. Say if we tried pulling it up to the northeast or northwest corner, excuse me. And so just to give confidence to the council that we have looked at numerous different locations and sizes of just trying to evaluate and get a, a best fit for safety operations and, and cost for this design.
Great. Thanks, Michelle. And I'll screen share and have one final slide. All right. So, you know, what's next for the project? As I mentioned, we are waiting on Wash Dot channelization plan comments. We should be receiving those within the next month or so. And from there we go and we'll meet with Wash Dot and start to have conversations basically on, you know, their take for the initial plan. It to, just for, for council's knowledge, we've been meeting with Wash Dot, you know, we had, we had several meetings with them leading up to the submission of the, the channelization plan. And we have adjusted our design a few times based on Wash Dot comments. A couple of them included, you know, fire. We also met with the fire chief and, and got some information on response, emergency response routes. And also removed what was initially a turn prohibition. We removed that as part of the design because of Wash Dot feedback. So we have been listening and taking into consideration some of the feedback up to this point. From then, we're going to move forward into, or would like to move forward into 60% design based on the concept that we're showing. And incorporate the channelization plan comments. And then really this next phase, after we get through 30% and we start to do a lot of our 3D work, this is really where right of way research, titles easements, appraisals, a lot of that work is going to begin in earnest. And part of that is kind of tied to some contract updates. And then the project's been going on for a couple of years. And so that's something that we're going to be also kind of looking at to take us to the finish line. So with that, I'm going to turn it over back to council and Mr. Mayor and see if there's any questions that we can help answer.
All right. Well, thank you, Brandon. Thanks, Michelle. And I, and I want to thank you both for your great presentation. And also for taking some of my challenging questions. But as you, as you're, as you're well aware, you can't get a more visible intersection in all of the city of Anacortes. So it's, it's an exciting project for us, but really having that explanation of the truck, you know, that truck graphic really made it clear, at least to me, and I know council will have lots of questions. But, you know, just the ability to move that around because you always get, well, why didn't you move it over here? Why don't you do it over here? So again, you still haven't answered, you know, the, the mom and grandma and the kids dropping off at Safeway. But, you know, that's, that, that's a, that's a whole different subject. But again, appreciate the work you've put in. And I think maybe before we turn it over to council for questions, maybe the public comment ready to jump in on this? And Mr. Walters?
Maybe before we do that, it was, is there going to be any presentation on 11th and Commercial?
No, that's a great question, Mr. Walters. I did want to share that. So the, the main, I wanted, this project, we've focused a lot on 12th and Commercial because that's, that's kind of the heart. But this project does extend and include two other intersections, which is part, part of, part of the expense and the complexity of this project. We focused a lot on the highway, both 12th and Commercial and 13th and Commercial in order to prepare for that Wash Dot channelization plan process. We've done some work on 11th Street, but because that's a city intersection, it's not on the highway. The highway turns and heads west. We, we've done less work on that. So a few, few things that are yet to be determined there on 11th. We've done some traffic analysis, although I can't quite tell you yet what the traffic control would be there, whether it will remain two-way, two-way stop control like it is, or whether we'd be proposing something else. A few of the things we are looking there to, to achieve there and we have done a little bit of work on is shorter crossings, some bulb bouts, some regrading of the, of the kind of wild grades that exist there. As well as we've looked at, at the possibility of providing a raised intersection there. So that's, that's yet to be determined when we evaluate costs, whether, whether we can achieve that or not. But those are, are some of the things that are on the table as we look to the 11th Street intersection in the near future.
So I guess the, the short answer is we don't have, we don't have a lot of graphics for that one to pretty pictures for those yet, but those will be coming.
Thank you for convincing.
All right. Well then, so I have, I, now I figured this out, Jordan. Sorry. It looks like it says Eli at Downtown Anacortes Alliance. So that looked like you, that I see somebody who might be named Eli. So, so you can, you can come on up and maybe you know the drill, but name and where you live is fine and we don't need the address, just.
All right, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Eli Barrett. I live at 1515 Fort 14th Street. And with my wife, we own Pelican Bay Books and Coffee House, just a few hundred feet from here. I'm joined here today by about a dozen of the more than 45 or 50 act volunteers in the Downtown Anacortes Alliance, of which I'm a member of the Board and Design Committee. I'm joined on that board by fellow business owners Lori Mall of Fidalgo Artisan Yarns and now The Wishing Rock and Lori Gere. She's not able to make it here tonight. We're excited to support the proposal, those roundabout at the corner of Commercial and 12th. This is a once in a lifetime opportunity to transform the entrance to downtown and be more attractive and functional for visitors and locals alike and to better represent our extraordinary community and its rich history. Today, between about four and five million vehicles a year pass through the intersection, about a quarter of those vehicles are ferry traffic. It is sometimes easy to forget that the Commercial and 12th is a state highway connecting not just our town to the rest of the state, but an entirely different county. Virtually every human being, case of banal bananas and gallon of milk that goes to the San Juan Islands passes through the center of our town at that intersection. This roundabout, along with the planned revitalization of South Commercial, presents an extraordinary opportunity to replace that intersection with something that will entice visitors into our downtown core. We're excited for more sidewalk space and the chance to add vegetation, benches and other amenities for residents and visitors. The curb extensions and striping at 11th will also calm traffic as enters downtown and make our downtown a more safer and walkable space. And the center of the roundabout, although it looks like it's going to be a lot smaller than it looked on the map initially, around which millions of people turn every year, offers the opportunity to build a centerpiece celebrating our community's rich history. Now, as the project moves forward, we would like to see the city leverage its influence on incorporating these goals with specific proposals for A, details on how the design of the roundabout will make the entrance to downtown more visible and appealing, including effective signage for our historic downtown. Amenities like trees, landscaping, seating at 11th, that will set the entrance to downtown as a welcoming pedestrian area and create a repeatable model to improve other down intersections in the future. And design goals and guidance for the center of the roundabout that showcase the unique history and character of Anacortes. And finally, there's no getting around the fact that the construction phase and necessary detours are going to be unpleasant and disruptive. We know that the city will plan and execute the work in a way that minimize the impact on downtown businesses. I think Tim's first big project here was when we paid Commercial. And those of us who had businesses at that time hated it. But he did a really good job of communicating and I'm really glad that we did it in the first few months when I was open rather than today. We know that you'll, you'll do it the right way. Although in the next round of design and planning, we will be grateful for details and input on how the timeframe is going to, and the project is going to be run to mitigate the impact on our residents and businesses. The current intersection has existed as a defining feature of our town since all but, well, everybody on this front can remember, I'm sure. What we choose to put in its place will continue to define Anacortes long after all of us are dead. We can and should do it really, really well.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Anybody else want to follow? Okay. Come on up. You know the drill.
Mayor Miller and council, thank you. I'm Warren Tesler, 1613 Sixth Street. And co-chair of the Anacortes Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, a group that works with the city to work on better ways to get people walking and biking and using means of transportation other than motorized. Had a really good experience with the city over the last 12, 14 years or so doing that. We also appreciate the shout out for Open Streets coming up this weekend. And that's been a great partnership with the city for 10 years now and encourage people to come on out for that. Um, in terms of the, the roundabout design and the, and the section between 11 and 13th, it's, you know, a long time coming and very welcome idea. And should do, as Eli said, and Tim should, should do a lot to improve traffic and usability for that, for that intersection and, and do a lot of good for us. I just want to point out, you know, a couple of comments, advisories, the only link I was able to see before the meeting was showed just the design. So it was unclear to me exactly what's included in the design. But to the extent that the approaches to the roundabout from all, from all directions include, it looks like either channeling cyclists onto separated bike paths or ramps up to the sidewalk. That's really necessary and, and good that we accommodate that in some way, you know, you know, the, the first roundabout that was done over on 22nd and R doesn't really have any good transitions for cyclists to get up on the sidewalk or get out of traffic. And it's not nearly as busy an intersection as this will be, of course. But there will be experienced cyclists, a confident cyclist who depending on the traffic flow will often take the lane and ride on the road through the intersection to wherever they need to go. But many, many more will not be that confident and it won't be that safe. And they'll want to get out of the way. Again, similar to the, the roundabout out by, out by San Juan Passage has ramps in all directions that a cyclist can move easily up on the sidewalk, take the crosswalk and get across. So it's absolutely vital that we have those incorporated and it looks like they're there, but I'm just reemphasizing that. It also appears that there are little marks on the design that indicate what I take to be activated signals for the crosswalks for pedestrians and the cyclists. Again, I can't over emphasize the importance of that, especially on such a busy intersection. I would ask that thought be given to how visible and, I guess, forceful to be a word, those signals are. I mean, we have them in several places now and in Anacortes notably at L and, and 12th and then farther down on H and 12th. Those signals are, are not real prominent when they're activated. I, I use them commonly or often and it's fairly common when I've activated to see cars that have had time to see the signal and to stop for there to be two or three or even four cars that go through it, that signal before someone stops. Quite frankly, I get a better result if I have my 11-year-old grandchild, granddaughter with me. They come, they come, they, they stop quickly on those. But there are other signals for that that are more along the size of, say, size and brightness of a, of a traffic light, yellow light that are either mounted along the road or even overhead that I've, I've used in other cities on roads this busy and seem to have a much better, better result in that sort of thing. So I would, I would just ask that the designers give, give thought to that because there are, you know, a, a fair amount of both cyclists and a, and a fair number of pedestrians at that intersection even now. And, and, you know, getting, getting cars to stop reasonably promptly and, and getting people across is going to be very, very important. So I, I just want to emphasize that. You know, otherwise I think I echo a lot of what Eli said and wholly, you know, wholeheartedly supportive of, of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? I think that probably captured the sentiment of most of the downtown alliance folks. Counsel?
Mayor Miller.
Oh, Mr. Holman.
Well, I want to add one more piece of information that city staff knows, but I don't know how well we shared about what Mr. Tesla said regarding that use of this intersection by bike and peds. Before we entered into this project, so way back in 20, late 2018, maybe early 2019, we did do a, a bike and pedestrian count at this intersection. So we, we took an hour, two-hour period, right around four to six counted bike and peds and, and had over 100 bike and peds within that two-hour period. So that's pretty good considering bike and ped usage increases as, as facilities improve. So with as substandard as they are, we're still seeing a fair amount of bike and peds. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
All right, counsel. I'm sure you want to ask some questions maybe. I know Public Works Committee has seen this probably a couple of times.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Bolton?
I'd like to thank Mr. Barrett and Mr. Tesler for their words. And I think, I think that's super helpful to us as council. And one of the things that I was reminded of is that the 32nd and M roundabout, some constituents have talked about how many signs there are there and that they can be distracting. So I would just like to call out maybe not have so many or maybe a different approach to signage there at the new one, I mean.
Yeah, thank you. I, I do want to say that that's a concern of the engineering department is, is sign sensitivity, right? If we put up too many signs, nobody sees any of them. But I will also say that for the sake of Michelle and Brandon, that, that signs, especially going into a roundabout on a state highway are regulated by the MUTCD. So there are a certain amount of signs that Wash Dot's going to require us to have.
Okay, thanks. Mayor Miller?
Ms. Hubick and then Mr. Walters?
Thank you. I had a quick little question about the crosswalks that are close to the actual circle. And I know that this is probably not 100% to scale, but it looks like the crosswalk striping is kind of far back. Like when I was coming around the one at 22nd and R the other day, I noticed that the crosswalk is like, when cars stop to wait for it, they stop in the crosswalk. And so I was just wondering if this is actually like a car and a half back or if there's a sense of maybe moving them back or is all of that regulated by somebody else too?
Brandon or Michelle, can you speak to crosswalk placement for us?
Sure, sure. I can speak to that. There are some regulations. Wash Dot requires that the crosswalks be at least 20 feet from the yield line, which is a, a car length. And so we try to maintain it close to that as possible so that we don't have, as you said, the vehicle stopped in the crosswalk when they're stopped at the yield line. So that's, that's the goal in the design of, of this design as well.
Mr. Walters? Mr. Walters.
Well, I agree with the upshot of Mr. Barrett's comments that this is a very important intersection. It's really important that we get it right. I do think that we are not ready on this project until we answer a couple of remaining questions and let me just rattle those off. So first of all, I think in terms of the view corridor down Commercial Avenue. We're going to have this roundabout in the current design be off center. But then also the landscaped area in the middle is off center from the roundabout. So as we are finalizing the design, I would just like there to be some consideration of what what is it? What does it look like from the perspective of a car headed north on Commercial Avenue? That is making the choice to maybe go to our downtown on its way to the ferry. I just spent a couple of days in Paris. And man, they spend all an extraordinary amount of time thinking about sightlines and how things are lined up and how the avenues come together. And I think a little bit of attention there could really pay off maybe with some little changes. Safeway, especially the southwest parking lot, which is where the drive up and go stations are. I worry about cars coming out of there and trying to make a left turn headed west to go back into the roundabout. Because currently the direction of that parking lot is north. You're only supposed to go one way headed north. I wonder if it should be reversed, if it should be south, if you should come out of the roundabout and go into that parking lot instead of coming out of it because it seems to me that the bind is going to be right there in front of Safeway where a whole lot of people seem to just pull up and park and let people out and wait for people to run into the store and there are no quick trips to Safeway anymore, but still, you know, people are parked there for some amount of time. And if I don't know, but if the roundabout changes the dynamics of the traffic flow through there, do they start? Do cars start piling up all the way back into the roundabout because they can't get through the travel lane because people are parked in front of Safeway? That's not a roundabout design issue, I don't think, but maybe it's an it's an issue that could be affected by this project. Maybe we can instruct Safeway to stripe that lane or do some enforcement or something to affect that that issue. Obviously, how the roundabout affects eleventh and commercial is one of my concerns. I'm certainly glad that we're getting eleventh between commercial and O paved as part of this project to eliminate some of the roller coaster effect there on the pavement. But there are a lot of left turn movements that occur on Commercial Avenue at eleventh. Do we continue to allow those? I know you've been thinking about these things, but for me, I would want to see some of the conclusions that you reach be- before we get to the point where we're authorizing the project. And then finally, how we manage the American Dream Building and the potential for acquisition there. It seems to me this design really decimates the parking on the east side of the building and on the north side of the building. I wonder if we looked at any options to replace that parking with on-street parking. Because right now that it's kind of, you've got travel lane sidewalk parking, but and in a made wider pavement area, you would assumedly have on-street parking than sidewalk than building. But maybe there isn't room there before you get to the corner. I don't know, but maybe there are other alternatives. And one thing that I'd thrown out at the Public Works Committee meeting just two hours ago was maybe we look at acquiring the entire site and demolishing the building and building a public square. There are a large number of people who hang out at twelfth and commercial, not just on Sunday mornings, but also on Sunday mornings and the amount of public space, truly public space that we have in our downtown area and in this particular corner. I think is is valuable to us and RCO grants or other opportunities might present themselves to pay for that effort. Especially because in the alternative, if the building doesn't have any value, depending on how things get reconfigured. Maybe that makes sense. So I wanted to broaden our thinking there to possibly consider some of those options. Thanks.
Mr. Young, sorry, sometimes I can see the blue light, but sometimes I can't. Mr. Young.
No, thank you, Mayor Miller. Again, you know, I think we've had the discussion about design and part of that is, of course, you're considerate of all of the stakeholders that are affected by any changes that are taking place, any decisions that the city's proposing to move forward and how do we get there with minimal impact but maximum result? My concern has always been about that intersection at Safeway. Because my concern is, you know, with people turning into Safeway and then also trying to come out. And if we're down to one lane there and traffic is increasing, you know, I think two million people going to the San Juans. You know, every year, it's still a difficult place to be. So, you know, I wanted and brought up in our meetings that the first consideration would be to the most appropriate design for arresting that issue and maximizing what we were attempting to do. Then take a look at what needs to happen with the least impact for those stakeholders that are there. And part of that answer again, Mr. Holman, I think did a reasonably good job. I'm gonna give you that much on that because it was very good. Job of conveying that it really is one of the better choices that we have, given what we are trying to address. I do think though, as Mr. Walter said, that we should continue to look at maybe less about the entrance as is the exit, because if they're trying to exit Safeway using that same methodology, they're going to need to enter that single lane roundabout trying to go out and especially if they're going south. So, you know, it feels sort of I'm uncertain about that. But, you know, I'm hoping that we continue to look at that, even if there's an entrance to come in and exit another way, that would be something that I think would, you know, need to be fully considered. And I know you really guys really have, but I'm just still not quite there, even though I'm very happy with what I'm seeing. I do truly do appreciate the communication, the efforts that's gone in by everyone on this, but that one intersection is still a little troublesome for me. And I want to make sure, I think, as everyone has said about Mr. Barrett's comment, just teasing a little bit. That, you know, downtown is huge and it's a wonderful place and we're trying to encourage some of those people to enter there and, you know, spend time, money and love us as we do. So that that's been a priority. So I think I've conveyed that in the meeting prior to this. And so I just sort of want to put it back out there again for the public to know that we were are looking at that and that there may be additional solutions to come out of this. Thank you. Thank you.
Miss Cleveland.
Thank you. So first of all, I want to say thank you for to Michelle for because my first question when I reviewed this was the fact that how can we, you know, adjust where that circle is so that it has less to alleviate some of that impact to the American Dream property? So I appreciate you kind of going through that. That was very helpful and kind of solidify the the reasoning behind why it's located where it is. I think that the roundabout itself is going to be a massive improvement. If you drive through that area, it's kind of a asphalt desert and does not really feature how wonderful our community is. Fortunately, Safeway has a number of those beautiful trees and when they're all in bloom, it's it's great, but I think this is going to be a huge improvement. My one additional comment to what everyone else has said, which I agree with for the most part, is when we look at eleventh and commercial that intersection, I don't want to look at it just in relationship to twelfth and commercial or thirteenth, but also to eleventh and Q. Because that is an intersection where you enter for the port of Anacortes. And we see more and more frequently that we're having to put stops, temporary stop signs there for events throughout the summertime. So I I just want to, I I hope that and the engineering department can kind of think about it may not be part of this project, but how does that in impact eleventh and commercial and if what that looks like. So that's, and maybe that needs to be around about at some point. I know that's a heavy haul route, so that could be more complicated. Or if eleventh and commercial should be around about, but that's just something that I would like us at least to be talking about in relationship to this project.
Well, you you bring up a great point because as you probably know, or at least I thought we we've communicated that we could receive grant funding for that. Those crosswalks, but you're the point as well taken that a coordinated effort between these two that we we shouldn't operate these in a in a vacuum, these two projects in a vacuum. So great, great point.
Correct me, the the grant for that crosswalk, is that at that intersection or is it close? It's, there's a midway where the Anthony sign is.
Yeah, actually, that grant that we rewarded by SCOG just this year is for both both the eleventh and Q intersection as well as a crossing at twelve. So so they, these projects marry very well. So your point's well taken. Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Quick question for staff. Has there been any modeling done to imagine how many people going south will just go the other way, go on cue and just avoid the roundabout completely to go back down commercial? Because like I I imagine, because I'm looking at a Google Maps of it, and if you're in that parking lot and let's say that there's you know, a ton of the big trucks coming up commercial and they're hooking a left to go out to the ferries. If you're trying to come out of Safeway and all you see are trucks, you're just like, no, man, you back up and then you take cue down. Has there been any modeling done to figure out what like that increase of traffic could look like? And how it might impact like Dakota Creek when they let out at, you know, three o'clock in the afternoon and traffic's backed up going south anyway?
Yeah, I I don't believe that we've done any modeling on our avenue of the impacts. I I I think, and that's that's something we can look at and actually probably will be looking at when we kind of dive into that eleventh and Q intersection. Because we do want to maybe make some changes to some left turns there from the port. So we'll be looking at that. And so we can take into account when we do that modeling, the changes to Twelfth Street and how that might might impact things. Because, yeah, we don't want to, as you kind of heard Brandon say about eleventh and commercial. We don't want to make changes at twelfth that just move the problem. We want to kind of fix it in a holistic standpoint. So thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thanks. And thank you, Ms. Muck and Mr. Gonzalez for all your work and your great presentation. I just wanted to follow up on one of council member Walters's comments about the direction that the parking is on the west side of Safeway. Currently, it's kind of a nice way to sneak in and out. But it does seem like, I don't know if that's a conversation that you've had or could have, but it it might be worth exploring because it seems like the flow would be better because it's already pretty dicey when you're coming out of that parking and you take a left onto commercial as it is. So anyway, just wanted to see if you thought that idea might be explored. Thanks.
All right. Well, again, this was a discussion item, presentation and and with the goal of making sure that there is, you know, anything that we may have missed and working with the Alta team and some really great points brought up and I'm excited, I'm excited about this one. I know our engineering team is as well and but there's a lot of work to do and making sure that we capture all the all the possibilities. So, all right, with that, we'll close this item and move on to item six C. Which is contract modification, our avenue long-term improvement project and Mr. Holman.
Mayor Miller.
Oh, Mr. Walters.
On the last item, I wonder if we might ask for some, the next check in to be sort of nearer term. Because we haven't had a check in on this project in a long time, given its importance.
Yeah, that's yes, I think we're, I think we would like to provide that as well, twofold. One, you can, if some of you can remember what we were dealing with around the beginning of twenty twenty one, that wasn't necessarily very fun. So that's obviously added some delays to the project dealing with trying to design a major roundabout in the pandemic, but also we've accelerated the project. So we're, we hope to be hitting some of these milestones that we talked about sixty percent, like Brandon talked about ninety percent. We hope to be hitting those quicker. And so we'll be definitely coming back and and to reiterate what Mayor Miller said, I took took good notes. We'll review the video and we'll incorporate all your comments and and take a look at them as they fit to the design.
But but to your point, Mr. Walters, I would, I I'm imagining the slide that Brandon had up a minute ago and I'm I'm imagining dates next to those. So we'll we'll work on that. So.
Sounds, sounds good.
All right. Okay. Well, it's still Mr. Holman and it's still item six, it's six C now. Contract modification, our avenue, long-term improvement project.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Mayor and council and the public. So if you'll take a little trip with me from twelfth and commercial, we're going to talk about another roundabout project, which is we call the our avenue long-term improvement project. It involves a roundabout at thirtieth and R that we've talked about to some extent in the past. That that construction contract for those improvements, so that that roundabout project as well as sidewalks down our avenue. We just today received the hundred percent thumbs up from Washstop to go to bid on that. So we'll be taking that to bid. Probably next week, I think the thirtieth is our estimated date. We'll have a bid opening probably three or four weeks later and then you'll be seeing that a week or two after that for that construction contract. This evening, what I have before you is an actually a contract modification to the design contract for that project. And normally when we bring you a design contract, we're telling you not a great story about cost overruns and and reasons why things have gone up in price, but this is actually a good story that I wanted to share with you this evening. So this project has stayed on budget through some some great contract because management by Steve Lang in the engineering department and and so as we have completed the the design contract or and are close to sending it to bid, we're under budget. But in the meantime, as we were pursuing grant funding for for the project, for the construction phase of the project, we found different grants easier to win than others. And so as we develop that construction and funding package that's fairly complex involves about four different grants. We found different parts of the project stayed in and other parts of the project were trimmed because we couldn't find construction funding for for them. So we did look at at some of the pedestrian improvements that are are along Q Avenue as from thirty second to thirtieth as well as a pedestrian connection up to twenty ninth and commercial did get cut from the project. But in the meantime, SCOG, SCAG Council of Governments did approach us with some additional grant money for design to to they they were looking to meet obligation targets. So they they approached us, asked if we could take more more design money for the project. And we said, of course, said yes. So this modification contract modification is to utilize that additional hundred and seventy six thousand dollars of grant funding in order to design those parts of the project that were bring those forward from thirty percent design to a hundred percent design in order to provide a good basis to chase grant money for those additional phases to the project. So with that, I wanted to, you know, say that we we recommend this modification, approving this modification because it utilizes approximately eighty six percent grant money. So the 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 contract modification is with HW Lochner, Inc. in the amount of two hundred fifty seven thousand nine forty five, of which a hundred and seventy six thousand is grant funding. That'll bring the total contract price to eight hundred and thirty one thousand one hundred and fifty two.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. I had sort of a side question about this particular project. I've had a number of citizens approach me about it and, you know, many had ideas about the design. And, you know, will it be beautified? I think part of the issue is, you know, the hope is that because that's also such a big corridor for people coming to our city that they, you know, the look has been sort of stale in a sense. And that they're hoping that we have some, you know, beautification trees or sidewalks that are designed such that it looks beautiful, much like what we are trying to do on commercial. So if you would elaborate just a little bit on that, I think it would be appreciated by everyone.
Yeah, so there will be some some beautification. This corridor is a little bit more utilitarian. I think we all recognize that. It runs through a or adjacent to an industrial area. But but this project does do some enhancements. One of one of the big ones that we're excited about is it provides better pedestrian uh, and bicycle enhancements with wider sidewalks along it as well as there will be some some landscaping that goes in the middle of the roundabout. So that that roundabout at thirtieth and R will look similar to twenty second and R. But perhaps we've been in some discussions with the arts committee about perhaps looking at some ability to maybe even put some art in that. I don't know where those have progressed to. You don't want me involved in art, but that will definitely beautify things as well as one other element that will provide some landscaping. Is there a number of bio retention cells which are a storm art facility that I won't go in engineering on you. But as a part of those stormwater elements, there will be some some landscaping provided, you know, bushes and and ten tends to be native landscaping, much like the bio cells that are outside of City Hall.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters. This additional scope or revised scope that is proposed as part of this amendment is, I guess, my favorite part of this project. Because it has the potential to improve the connectivity between Commercial Avenue and finish off streets in that area between Commercial Avenue and our avenue, including pedestrian facilities, sidewalks that don't currently exist and that need to exist. I have a lot of concerns about the rest of the project, but that's not really before us right now. So I'll I'll save that, I guess, for next week. But I all, as I've relayed, you know, the presence of the roundabout at thirtieth instead of thirty second is my primary concern. And maybe we can talk about that offline. Otherwise, I uh, suggest we move forward with this amendment.
Second. Okay, oh, that, yeah, that did sound like a motion from Mr. Walters. And a second from Mr. Young to move that the council authorizes a signature on modification of the contract with H W Lochner in the amount of two fifty seven nine forty five, increasing the total contract price to eight hundred and thirty one thousand one fifty two. Any additional discussion? Mr. Francia, I could take the vote, please.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Smolten.
Yes.
Ms. Hubert.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, final item under other business is item six D. This is a interlocal agreement with the city of Burlington, Mount Vernon, Seidra Woolley and with Skagit County establishing the North Star leadership team. This is a discussion item with possible action and Ms. Swetam will be presenting.
Thank you, Mayor Miller and members of council, members of the audience. So in your packet is a draft interlocal agreement that was designed to kind of formalize some of the discussions that have been happening amongst the county and mayors from several of the cities uh, in Skagit County to provide some information gathering and policy recommendations to the agencies in Skagit County regarding North Star and and the the goals of the project. So I thought I would just kind of step through quickly some basic terms of the agreement. I don't have slides. But I did in response to one of the questions that I got today from a council member, want to share with you. One of the recitals in the agreement, I I talks about the the seven vital conditions for health and wellbeing that have been identified by the leadership team of the North Star Group. Um, and and that sort of, you know, help guide the work that this group is going to do. So those those items are up here on the screen. Thriving natural world, basic needs for health and safety, humane housing, meaningful work and wealth, lifelong learning, reliable transportation and belonging and civic muscle. So those items have been added to the packet for this agenda item. And I'm happy to to share this graphic with anyone who's interested in it. So.
Mr. Walters.
One of the things we learned at the evening that we shared with other council members and mayors a couple of weeks ago, many weeks ago now, was that this framework was not developed by the North Star consultant, but was developed by some federal agency and is apparently in use or going to be in use federally. So it's it's not it's not just something, you know, civic muscle and some of these other cutesy terms struck us as a little weird, but they're federally weird. So I I I guess that counts for something.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. So so the interlocal agreement is to establish the leadership team and the parties. To it are the cities of Mount Vernon, Anna Cortis, Burlington, Seidra Woolley, and then Skagit County. And the focus is to do work as a team on the study of housing, homelessness, behavioral health and substance use disorder. So there's a lot of the recitals kind of talk about the aspirations for the group and what the purpose of this of this group is. The specific responsibilities are laid out and the scope of work focuses a lot on acquiring information and data and then making recommendations by consensus to the local jurisdictions to then implement. A a point of clarification here is that this this interlocal agreement doesn't create a separate agency. There's there, it doesn't have the ability to contract or make any decisions about funding. It's just a kind of a recommendation group. And then any action that would have to be taken with respect to any of these recommendations would need to be taken by the individual jurisdictions. And and that would all happen through, you know, whatever the appropriate public process was for that. So you'll you'll see that throughout the scope of work, you know, talks a lot about acquiring data. And then really just making recommendations to the agencies about funding options and ways to identify funding sources and and programming. The the agreement is got a an indefinite term, meaning it's effective upon execution and then in effect until it's terminated. But any of the agencies can withdraw from the agreement at any time with thirty days notice. The 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 leadership team is going to consist of the mayors of the four cities, so Mayor Joe Boudreaux from Mount Vernon, Mayor Julia Johnson from Seidra Woolley, Mayor Miller for Anna Cortis, and Mayor Steve Sexton for Burlington, and then the deputy county administrator Jennifer Johnson for the county. So it's a, you know, fairly fairly simple agreement, but the the my understanding is that this group has been meeting and talking about these issues for a while. And this was in an an attempt to try to build some structure and some clarification about exactly what their role was. So those are my comments and I'm happy to answer any questions. I think Mayor Miller has been really involved in in this process as well. So.
Yeah, I'm certainly meeting with these folks, even if there's not an interlocal as part of it. Because I know for, you know, I've talked to certainly council members about this a lot, specifically the the NOFA arrangement. There's nothing written down about the mayors getting together to provide recommendations. I think it goes to the United Way Board and then to the county commissioners and there's there's nothing. So I think this is not not a bad thing to do to at least write down some sort of in interlocal where we're talking about whether it's, you know, doc recording fees, behavioral health, sales tax, those kind of things. So I think that's the the idea behind it, but putting it under this North Star. And and yeah, I didn't I didn't come up with this idea at all either, just to make that clear. Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Uh, so I I read through this in the pocket. And I it makes sense, but I have a couple of questions regarding, you know, what what's the scheduling of the meetings? I think as as one of the members of the Hacks Committee, we spent a lot of time working on this, some of these issues or at least trying to gather information. And there's a lot of information to gather. And when I look at this, I think, okay, so this is a group which makes sense that are that's going to be collecting, receiving, collecting information, possibly making recommendations. Is there any specificity to the frequency of meetings or when those meetings would be happening or kind of the OPMA rules? Because I I would like to be able to kind of know, just in the sense that once those recommendations come out, I know that we've had a challenge from time to time trying to get follow up or additional information from the county, at least when it comes to some of the the funding and follow up for funding and success rates and whatnot. So I was just kind of curious if you have any thoughts on that.
I'd love to get a detailed schedule of when all the meetings are going to be. That would be fantastic. But again, I think this is the start of trying to formalize that. I think that's kind of part of the part with the interlocals. I mean, especially when it comes to what I always refer to as the NOFA meetings that, yes, there's a there's a schedule that's kind of nebulous with the county. And then they round, they round up a bunch of mayors and and county commissioners and say, hey, vote on that, vote on your recommendations. And then the OPMA was a big discussion around that subject. I know that and probably Ms. Swetan probably comment on that that one, but I know OPMA was a concern there. But we previously weren't doing OPMA with those with that NOFA funding. I think for me, this just folds in a couple of additional items under the North Star umbrella, but misses the bolt and that. Oh, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to weigh in on the OPMA issue because I met a couple of weeks ago with the attorneys for the county and all of the agencies. And we did a deep dive into the OPMA requirements. This agreement doesn't create a new organization or a new agency that would be subject to OPMA, nor does it include a quorum of the legislative bodies of any of the agencies. So there so it's really not subject to OPMA. The agreement does provide an opportunity for this leadership team to adopt some bylaws, which could create some of that structure. But but that wasn't the intent of this agreement. It was sort of to clarify that like, hey, these guy, there isn't really any authority here to take any action. This is a a policy group that makes recommendations, but they can't let, you know, they're so so the language and the scope of work, I think, tries to make it clear that the that this doesn't create an agency that's going to be conducting business or doing things. And in fact, at the at the last minute, we added some language that said that even if this group makes a recommendation to individual jurisdictions, they can disregard him. So so not subject to OPMA.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters. I certainly can see the, I guess, objective of formalizing and writing what has been going on for more than a year now in terms of the North Star Group's work. And I think that the this project of the North Star effort is vitally important. If it is, as I understand it, something that should lead to a complete reboot of the way we deliver human services in Skagit County. And by that, I would include behavioral health. I would include substance abuse assistance and housing, not homelessness services, but housing more broadly. But that's also a really tall order. And I don't think that the text of this agreement really helps us go anywhere because it it sets up a group that already exists. It gives that group no authority to do anything. It says that they are going to be a leadership team, which is what they've already been calling themselves, but only in an advisory committee capacity for the purpose of study. I don't think that's what we need. I think we actually need a leadership team and leadership on these issues to move us forward. I mean, there's so many agencies involved in health services delivery, including behavioral health. There are so many agencies involved in housing services delivery. And then there's all the local jurisdictions, which is more than just the cities that are involved in providing the development regulation framework for all those housing units to get built. There there's so much work to be done here and it's so important that it happen. I I I feel like there are there are quite a few areas where this this agreement starts down the path of saying something useful and then says, no. We'll we'll just say, we're just going to be advisory or we're just going to study. And maybe the purpose of that is to avoid compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. I I don't know. We could, though, because we're asked to approve the agreement, we could just write in here that we would subject the group to the Open Public Meetings Act. And we do that in a variety of other contexts. The Skagit Council of Governments Growth Management Act Steering Committee, the the smart team, the Skagit Multi-Agency Response Team. I assume the Solid Waste Governance Board. I mean, none of those, except maybe smart, I guess, are separate entities, but they're subject to the OPMA. As far as I know, I I assume they are complying with the OPMA. And the reason I think that that is potentially important is because we we have asked about these meetings and and tried to get more information out of the county about the North Star Project and then and the county has been somewhat responsive and they've set up those evening meetings that we were all invited to and attended. But there isn't really a substitute for just having open meetings. So I I would be looking for that as an addition. I would be looking for a stronger statement of purpose in this agreement. The agreement says that each party shall appoint one person, one alternate. I guess I would be looking for clarity on how that happens. And then, you know, there is one recital that says that this is a joint board. The last recital or the penultimate recital says that this would be utilized as a joint board and that kind of weighs in favor of submitting it, subjecting it to the Open Public Meetings Act. So my, in my judgment, this agreement isn't ready for approval and I would pass that if we send it back to the group to revise it.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I agree that the points that my colleagues are making are very important. They really are. And it is important that we push forward this discussion. But the thing I'm encouraged by is the fact that we absolutely started meeting about this very thing. And, you know, we've operated as salos, city salos, you know, government salos, you know, in a variety of iterations for forever. The beauty of the meeting when we all came together as cities was that they had various members from other cities and other departments at your table. So you developed a relationship just in that small amount of time bonding. And so that was important. I think as a beginning conversation, particularly when we're trying to stitch together so many services, so many chiefdoms too, if you would, and trying to bring that together. I I consider this a a bit more fluid than maybe Mr. Walters do. But I do believe that it is a beginning point that we could move forward with. And then, you know, whether or not we come back for review to say, we're looking for more detail or more, you know, thoughts, ideas of how this could be structured. But I believe that in bringing this forward, particularly after that meeting that we had, that I was impressed by, I really was. And so, you know, I'm very hopeful, but I do think that it's But I do think that it signals a collaboration um, that can begin. Uh, and I think that what happens if you do not necessarily in the beginning have all of the requirements of the uh, conditions of public meeting, you know, and discussion, it allows a candid discussion between stakeholders. And then you move out from there. But this is the beginning of a conversation, and I'm not sure if we've ever had this effort at this level as a collective together, and I find that incredibly important and why it's necessary. I think that we move forward on this with, you know, again, recognizing that there are things that we do want to add to it. But I I I just think that right now um, you know, much more than this, maybe a couple of tweaks tends to stifle honest creativity sometimes. And um, that would be my concern about not pushing this forward right now. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Maltin.
Thank you. I was looking at the scope of work, and I mean, one of the things that has been alluded to is that I mean, at least on the Hacks Committee is is Ms. Cleveland McGrath mentioned, I feel like a lot of times we've asked for information from the county and we haven't gotten it. And I don't necessarily see that this is a way to that, although the scope of work does says um, that the group will develop recommendations and provide any other information or analysis that may assist local jurisdictions in the development of methods for improving all these conditions. What I would really love to see is some kind of a scope of worker not or a work plan that says this is when we're gonna let our people know what we're doing and the information that we're finding. And I don't know if that's an OPMA thing, or that's a re- like a monthly report, because I think that's due to us and to our communities. So I would really like to see something like that, that we could count on getting the download of the information from the county or from this group, sorry.
So can I just ask a clarifying question? Are are you looking for some kind of um, frequency of reporting or information sharing, or are you along the lines of wanting us to be subject to OPMA?
I would like both, actually. I mean, this is a really big project with a lot of money behind it. I don't think it's too much to ask. Thanks.
Yeah, and I'll just make one more comment on the O- OPMA, but you know, because of my my position, I serve on a number of countywide boards with other mayors, including Skagit Transit, Skagit nine one one, SCOG, uh, GMA, C, you know, multiple, multiple boards, some of which are sub, uh, most of which are subject to OPMA, but all those same boards have direct contracting authority, direct direct uh, financial authority. This the the uh, the I say this, not North Star, but I equate this to what I've talked to council before in the past about the uh, what we call the NOFA funding. And yes, the year year one and two, I really wish that I'd turn that over to the Hacks and said, you guys figure out the recommendations. But, you know, because of my position, hey, come to this meeting, and we're gonna go through those recommendations. But again, uh, formalizing the processes is a good thing, even if it's a incremental in uh, even if it's incremental and not perfect and not OPMA. Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
Uh, and to the question of OPMA, I think the threshold question is, is this purely an advisory body? The purpose statement says yes. I don't think frankly, it should be, it should be something more than simply a body that provides a forum, as the agreement states. Um, but also, given the scope of work, the recommendations that this advisory body will make will almost, in maybe a lot of circumstances, be a fait accompli. That, you know, that we'll end up getting bound to anyway, even though theoretically we have the authority to, you know, maybe walk some things back. So that, I think, always in favor of of OPMA compliance. But the reason OPMA comes up at all is because um, you know, the whole North Star project is a, in my limited view of it, is about bringing people together about how important these issues are. And so I think everybody gets that. I mean, the leadership team, the county commissioners, the county health department seem to understand that it's really important to talk about these issues holistically and how important they are. And then yet, we are not on the implementation side, bringing people along as well as we are. So, for example, we had that that meeting that we've talked about um, a couple of times, several weeks back, evening meeting, mayors, council members um, from all the jurisdictions, but not the public. And when the county has had meetings on the housing crisis, the homelessness crisis in the past, in some cases, they've charged a fee to attend. Um, there's a lot more that we need to do to broaden the involvement of the various stakeholders, all those organizations that are out there that are working on these issues, but also all the taxpayers who are paying for them. And so I I think our highlight of the OPMA uh, compliance as an issue now is simply because the the project, mostly the the county, has not done a good enough job on on broadening um, how interactive the project is with the rest of the community. And until we get there, you know, maybe an OPMA requirement is uh, you know, just one step uh, to uh, letting us all know how well this project is working and and what it's doing and what direction it's going.
Mayor Miller.
Uh, Mr. Young.
Not that I disagree, I absolutely agree with Mr. Walters on this, but you know, my argument is that the county, although it is a separate entity from the city, it is a combination of all of the cities and the people and the representation of that city, and bringing those people together that come up with something that they can present, in my opinion, also moves the county. So, you know, I I'm not thinking it's such a as big a deal, but I do recognize the issues that are coming forward. Thank you.
Well, I certainly will take take the issues back to the North Star Group. That's that part's easy, and I I want the feedback and appreciate it, so.
Can I say?
Yeah, you you can.
I I feel.
But I'm but I'm not, I'm gonna try not to read the mic, just say Mayor Miller.
I fail, I feel for Mayor Miller as the person coming here to have to defend this, and also um, Ms. Wetnam. Um, because I think a lot of our frustration, or not our frustration, but our concern is the fact that, yes, we had that fantastic evening meal where we got together and we were able to start to um, share ideas and information and bond. But there were, there were a number of questions that arose, and there was no set way of having those questions answered. And we're now a few months away, and I think there's a number of us who still have some questions, whether we are using all of the resources that are available of expertise that already exists in the community for this project or not. And so unfortunately, or fortunately, you know, this document kind of brings is our opportunity to report back to this group of leaders that, hey, we've, we don't feel like we are being brought along. Because I want them to know now that since we're not being brought along, I have concern when they come to ask for money for a project and our commitment as a city. Um, and so I would prefer that we're brought along from now, from this point forward, so that when that request comes, that we can make an honest um, and sincere effort to meet that request, because we have confidence that it will be effective for our community members.
Uh, look, I don't I don't mind even putting a hard spot on this one at all. Uh, this is what I've explained to all of you, I'm sure, on council, as we've met individually over this. This is came about over, I always get the numbers right, fifteen oh six and fourteen ninety money that Anacortes was two years, two years kind of ahead of the game uh, with our uh, uh, yes for housing sales tax initiative, and we designated the areas, the other the other agencies were a little bit behind, and and North Star kind of grew out of that, of trying to develop that group so they could figure out how to um, you know, know how to how to coordinate those funds. But I've heard loud and clear from councils like, yeah, we already got, we already got it figured out. So I spend many of those meetings saying, you know, I'm not going back to the council saying, hey, I'm gonna carve off some fourteen ninety money or fifteen oh six money for other things, because we've got this figured out. So, yeah, I'm already in an uncomfortable spot with them sometimes, and it's it's fine.
And from the standpoint of being your attorney, it's helpful for me to have the discussions with the group and say, here's what council has clearly articulated that they want to see in this agreement. So if that's a consensus from council that you would like to see some better, um, you know, the that the that this group is gonna be subject to OPMA, and that there's gonna be some reporting requirements that that's useful and and figuring out what Anacortes's role is in this agreement moving forward.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. And I don't know whether it needs to be explicitly called out, like, you have meetings on the second Tuesday of every month or month or something like that, but even if you just look at the North Star project on the county's website, like, the last legitimate update is from September of twenty two, and there's slides on here, slideshows that have like eight slides, and they don't actually say anything. Like, that's what slides are supposed to do, because you have a conversation around something. So just having a slideshow presentation on the county's website isn't giving the public anything. And just like the definition of what an interlocal is supposed to do is to reduce duplication of our economies of scale and generally improve government efficiencies. So this group can just take a minute to decide to report back to us every quarter, twice a year, something like that. Maybe we all ask the same questions and say the same things without them having to do the outreach on their own blindly. Maybe we're all wanting the same kind of answers from them, but they don't know, because they're having random interactions with us like this. So I I I agree with everybody completely, would love to see just even a broad statement that says, this is what we're gonna do, and this is how we're gonna be accountable back to you, cities.
You know, all all great points, and and I bet if we were looking at uh, the development of all the other boards, it would, they probably started out, uh, started out like that, whether it's, you know, Skagit Transit or Skagit nine one one, we've having the same conversations and and, you know, and some of it's on me of being able to communicate back the participation that I have in uh, countywide meetings, but, you know, that's always a challenge that we'll have, and uh, I'm always working to improve that. So, uh, the these inputs, I think, will be great for North Star. Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
So if um, Ms. Wetnam is gonna take this feedback back to the other parties, uh, certainly recognizing it is a multi-party agreement, maybe some of the other parties aren't interested in subjecting that to OPMA. I think the simplest solution is to write a sentence in there that says, it's subject to OPMA, the Open Public Meetings Act. But an alternative could be uh, a couple sentences that say, the meetings are open, which doesn't bring along all the other trappings of the OPMA, or that the meetings are on a regular scheduled basis, and they're open, or they're open and televised. I mean, there a whole number of other things short of OPMA compliance uh, that could be in the agreement. But um, they're all a little bit more complicated than just saying, you know, make it subject to OPMA. But then also the the purely invite, the the need for the language to say it's a purely advisory committee goes away if you say it's it's subject to the OPMA. So uh, maybe that could be the door to getting us a stronger purpose statement, you know?
All right, well, I I unless there's anything else, I think we we got some good inputs, so appreciate the feedback, and I'm interested to see what the other uh, councils are 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 saying uh, as well, uh, when they bring that back. So, all right. Uh, let's see, that was six D, that was the last item we had on our agenda. Seven is adjournment, uh, with no further business for the council. I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.